Okay, it's called meeting order and our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There you go.
I've been there for twenty minutes, I've had the president, what matters. And my watch is slow compared to the iPhone, so. Does that know your status? Is Dr. Davis on time?
We, we're gonna look, we said if we saw your lights, we'd have on the 18.
I'm a whole court now, maybe.
Let's have approval of the minutes of the vote here for the first 2016 regular meeting, please, motion.
I'm in.
Here we go.
I'll second.
Second by Rowdy, I'll leave it. Don't have anyone signed in by the administration.
Motion.
Okay. We don't have any public comments apparently. Okay, it's good administrative section, they got the motions, look at this.
So, but.
I think Mr. Curry got that, second by Hoover, Mr. Wilkerson. Okay.
Item A is an agreement with the following supervisory aid for the 2016-2017 school year in accordance with provisions of West Virginia Code 18A-5-8. Item B, University of Kentucky student Megan Tolliver to job shadows speech pathologist Deidre Roberts, December 15, 2016 through January 6, 2017. Item C, Mount West Community and Technical College student Emma Browning to observe speech pathologist Teresa Fowler at West Hamlin Elementary, fall semester. Item D, school volunteers who on occasion may also serve as bus shack rooms for athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, and have completed volunteer orientation. Item E, an agreement with Kathy Green to provide transportation for a student at Duval PKA for the 2016-2017 school year according to the terms of the agreement, which is attached and is funded through county. Item F, the designation of Jonah Atkins as signatory for all erate documents effective Item G, an out of county student transfer for the 2016-2017 school year. Item H, to abolish the following central office positions. The first one is a special education teacher, a tenor, autism teacher, Janie Farrell, who the last board meeting, board approved, her retired. So, we're gonna abolish that position as well as the executive secretary instructional office, the position that Kathy McCallum has held, who was recently approved, her retirement, effective December 18. And then we're gonna come back at item I, and J, and post new jobs. Item I, the adoption of a new job description and approval to post a position for special education teacher, itinerant, autism PK-12, and deaf hard of hearing PK-12, which the job description is attached. So, this position would take the place of the position that was held by Janie Farrell, because we have a need, not only for autism services, but also for our students out there who are deaf and hard of hearing. Do you want to add to?
Well, we've, we had Mrs. Schroeder at West Hamlin, who was a special education teacher, that went out to serve the hearing impaired students. Well, she went to regular ed now. And then we had Candy Basham at Ranger last year, who was pre-K special needs, that picked up what Missy was doing, Mrs. Schroeder. Now, we do not have anyone to serve those students, so. And Janie's job back there was, she took care of autism and BD, behavioral disorders. But now, all of your teachers are multi-categorical, and they have the BD qualifications. The only issue would be sometimes they have to write positive behavior support plans, and in doing that, they're doing them now, but also the psychologists, when it's a tough case, they go in and sit in and help write their behavioral plans also.
So, a big thing from what Janie Farrell had, but this person would be able to do hearing also.
Hearing, yes, which is a negative.
Thank you. Item J, approval to post a service position at the county office for secretary III halftime. This, this is a person who would be in the position that was previously held by Kathy McCallum, but as I mentioned to you at the last board meeting, just the volume of work, the nature of that position has changed. Farrell programs has changed so much over the past couple of years. There's not so much paper and pencil filing as there once was, it's mostly done electronically. This person would work not only in the instructional center, but also would work with certification, with Joanne Atkins, as well as take care of student transcripts, and then any other needs that we may have. Item K, a memorandum of agreement with the Division of Rehabilitation Services to allow on-the-job training for Michael McCourt as a diesel technician at the county bus garage according to the terms of the agreement, which is attached. Bill, you wanna explain it to the law there?
The Division of Rehab Service Company approached us a couple, three weeks ago. This young man we're talking about graduated from Ashland Community Technical College. He has about ten different certificates of diesel mechanics, power steering, brakes, electronics, and so forth. And he, they wanted him placed here in a site for some on-the-job training. We will pay him what a normal person would get in that position, plus they will reimburse us $2 additional an hour to do this. And initially, we're going with a ninety-day contract with the understanding, if this doesn't work out, we, either one of us can cut the ties in. But they said it could last up to a year, and we also made it clear that this person would not accrue any seniority rights, and they're not replacing a regular position.
Item L, is out-of-state travel to the following employees.
Any questions?
I have just a question about item I. Given the difficulty we have hiring persons with special education qualifications, is it gonna be, or how difficult is it going to be to find someone who can perform this job we posted?
Well, we are gonna post it with both of those certifications, but we're also gonna include in that posting, if you have one of those certifications and be willing to get the other, then we would, we would accept that also. If it's not a fully certified person, don't apply, because we don't think we could get someone that needs both of those certifications, but if we find someone has one, and they're already with the year on pair, Marshall has some slots coming up for spring semester through Romany, working with them, and we've been promised a couple of those slots if we need.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Okay, go ahead, Ken. Been an all yes on all the administrative items?
Yes.
Yes.
The finance on the table, motion please. I'm ready. Mr. Ellis?
Schedule of invoices totaling $1,67,276.77. Of course, don't reattach the listings attached on the other side. We're gonna change the top of that, by the way, which is gonna take us a little bit of time to work on that, but it shouldn't be a too big of a deal for us. Robin knows more about it than I do, so.
Right.
We'll check it. Then the county pension for the following retired employees paid from the county's excess levy, and they're listed there, it was one of the thirty, but they've elected to receive the dental vision benefit.
Will you be presenting at the next board meeting, please?
Forty hours stuff ready. I could have done it tonight, I guess.
Right, I just think you're.
They give these hand no.
Okay, very good. Okay, is that an all yes on the finance items as presented?
Yes.
All right, personnel, motion please.
I'm in.
Rowdy?
Second by Carol.
Okay, item A, transfer of professional personnel. B, employment of substitute professional personnel pending FBI, CID clearance. Item C, transfer of service personnel. Item D, employment of substitute service personnel. Item E, employment of extracurricular personnel. Item F, resignations or retirements, and at the bottom, resent, the employment of Midway Elementary PK teacher Jordan Moore effective November 15, 2016.
You want to discuss A as part of our interim plan?
Ms. Davis, her effective date, of course, would be tomorrow. I've had a conversation today with, with Mr. Smith, with Eddie, and he is, he's agreed to stay at Guy Valley, continue to work with Ms. Davis, at this time, serving as the dean of students, or students in that role, subbing in that position while we, while we post and fill that, that job, which we anticipate that we'll post tomorrow, but the posting wouldn't come down until sometime during, or actually after Thanksgiving break, so we'll discuss. Long story short, it's probably gonna be at the very earliest December the 20th, before I can bring a recommendation to you for that position, and that person wouldn't start until after Christmas break, at least sometime after Christmas.
That might work out well for the person during that period of time when things are kinda like very hectic, like deep weather, something. Yeah. Okay. Anybody have anything else on the personnel side? Oh, all yes on that one?
Yes.
Okay, let's go down to comments, can I say this for a minute? I just wanna mention one thing, and I haven't had the opportunity to read it yet, so what I'll do is look at these, as you all know, we had an audit of our, our school audit here a couple of months ago, I guess we did have the exit interview, and we've just now gotten the results of all those. So, they just sent one copy, and as Mickey indicated, either Noray have got the copy, so I guess at this point, this is the only one, so. If you feel decent, I'd like to take it and read it, then I'll bring it and try to share it around with everybody else, so we can see what it is. But it also makes mention, as it normally does, that Mr. Gaypart, the prosecuting attorney, he has also received a letter advising that we have got these. As you know, it's our responsibility to present to the prosecutor and our plans of corrective action for any cases are cited here, which is kinda common for us to do, so I'm sure Mr. Ellis will be taking care of that as he, as he gets a copy, and see what they actually says. Okay. I just wanted to share it once again, we just got that, I just got, who we got here, is that the name? Okay. That's everything I have. Anything else? Okay.
Roundy, you didn't get your part of the conversation we had before the board meeting started, we just found out that the governor has announced the two percent budget cut across the board, which includes state aid funding. As you'll recall, last year, initially, we were told to give one and a half percent cut on school systems, and they ended up reducing that to one percent, which worked out to be for us a hundred, was it a hundred and fifty-seven? We were talking about that earlier, we weren't sure about the exact number.
I think that's what it worked.
Hundred and thirty-eight, I think, was the five number.
It reduced to a hundred and thirty-eight.
So, I mean, and according to the message that we have received from Dr. Monterano, or state superintendent, I guess, you know, he and his staff are looking at what's happened this afternoon, and will be providing some additional details and direction for counties, so, in terms of what that's gonna be.
When does this two percent cut take effect?
It doesn't say in anything that we've read, what, what is out there, the media has reported. I mean, I'm guessing that it would be immediate, it would be something that would take place. I know last year, there was, there was some lag time, because the treasurers had to resubmit budgets as a result of what happened. Thinking back on how that played out last year, that wasn't a simple process, that took, you know, a few weeks to get that, get it all in place. So, this is brand-new, you know, Dr. Monterano kinda hinted around a couple of months ago in a phone conference that we had, that there may be some cuts coming our way, and it's come to fruition. So.
So.
We have some money, score the hold away.
We'll be okay, it'll just be okay.
Yeah, that we can, we can absorb this.
This year?
This year. Mr. Lee, well, I would, we've been talking, I know we should have knocked on wood, had rabbits, or something in our pocket, about personnel season, that it could be mild, you know, compared to what we had to do last year, or what we brought to the board for approval. This certainly will change what we're, what we're thinking, what we're looking at. I did, I did get a, a message from the State Department this morning, Ray, I, I think you saw, you made a copy on the email, showing how many were over for funding for next year. And if you didn't see, that's, that's okay, I just, according to the information I have from the State Department, our, the funding for next year indicates that we're eleven over on the service side, and I think eleven and a half are over on the professional side.
So, are carrying how many total over this year?
Which is, we're right around twenty-five. So, we have some work to do there, we know that, especially on the service side, it's difficult, though, to make those cuts, when you have, especially when your service is necessarily provided for special education students. So, that, obviously, that's a concern, that's something that we'll continue to monitor, we'll look at, and as Ray's already mentioned, Mr. Chrisley brought up, he will be providing the board with an update at the November 29 meeting, kind of where we are. Maybe by that point in time, we'll have some more information from the State Department in terms of what kind of cut, you know, we're gonna absorb.
At two percent, we're looking at two seventy-five roughly?
We'd be close. But there's definitely, it's always a possibility that later in the year, we could see something else, revenue's gonna increase.
Yep.
Plus, our local stuff, Ray's keep monitoring that to see what's happening there, if our county revenues are changing or less than expected, so we just gotta keep our eye on it, I guess that's what we're.
We're definitely keeping our eye on what's going on. And, you know, to this point, we've had to add five professional positions since the school year started, and one and a half service positions. Now, coming to you this evening, I've mentioned this to you when we were at Hardest a couple of weeks ago, that we had an over situation at West Hamlin, that we had been kinda hoping would go away, we put a substitute teacher over there to work in the classroom where the overage was located, and Mr. Roy sent us an email yesterday that he had enrolled two new students in fifth grade, and then today, he indicated, because we're meeting with principals as we work on this OEDPA, he indicated that he has another young man, another fifth grade student, that he may, he may get in this week a foster child, so.
Are they in Lincoln County?
Yeah. We, we right now are really thirteen over. We have eighty-eight students in between three teachers. There's twenty-eight in two classrooms each, and then there's thirty-two in another classroom, and this is outside in those portals. It's a very small space. So, based upon the numbers, and it obviously is not gonna go away, we're gonna need to post and fill a fifth grade position. And there's room for the class, there is a, there is a classroom out there in the annex, because last year, they did have four fifth grade teachers. So, it's a, it's a necessary, you know, need, so I'll bring, the next board meeting, we'll have it on the agenda for official approval, but we'd like to go ahead and post.
Dr. Tolliver? So, if you want to go ahead and post it, then just make it retroactive on your action item.
If that's okay, make a board. If we had known that, that, you know, these numbers were gonna change, we would have included that on this, on this board agenda, but, so just wanted to discuss it with you this evening. I'd also mentioned to you a couple of weeks ago, that we may have to add a halftime special education A at Duval, and now that's looking like it could be a full-time position. Bill, do you care to explain what's going on there?
We had, we've had a young lady that's been homebound all year. She's coming back. In the past, she's always come a half a day, and that's what we anticipated, and that's what she has been, so we've had a sub in that position, a half a day for her. Well, now, after Thanksgiving, she's gonna start coming full days, and that person does require a personal aid with disability.
Okay, back to, before you mentioned the number that the State Department said we need over right now for next year, twenty-two, I guess. Now, with these numbers, have you just given us increased that number up to whatever it is?
Well, that, what I quoted you would be for next year's funding for FY '18.
Right, but they aren't aware of these additions we've made, I mean, I mean, from our perspective, do we have to consider that? We're not really twenty-two, but we're like twenty-two, or twenty-one.
Yes, yeah, I'm.
Ever, how many, how many services did you say we had added?
We, we've now, this, if we, we add this special education teacher, that's gonna put us at two and a half positions.
Two and a half service.
Now, we cut twenty-two and a half positions last year personnel season, that was fourteen professionals, and eight and a half on the service side.
But I mean, how many have we added this year?
This will make six professional and two and a half services.
Okay, so that might question, there's eight and a half positions here that the State Department isn't aware of. I mean, would that, does that mean that instead of being twenty-two over, we're twenty-eight and a half, or thirty and a half, or whatever?
Right, that's, that's what I'm getting.
We did have six and a half, or the eight and a half to the twenty position, we're thirty and a half over.
Right. Well, a lot of those were added before October 3rd, and that was a cutoff on search right of this, so. Anybody that had it before October 3rd, it's already included in that number that Mr. McGee gave us. So, we're not, it's not as bad as what it sounds, or whenever we start adding all that.
So, really, we'd just be adding two positions.
Twenty-five.
Yeah. Well, that's correct. I didn't, I didn't understand it.
Not good, but bad manner.
So, if it's okay with the board, then we will proceed with posting those positions.
That's fine. Okay.
And the aid we will post, if a child would happen to go back on homebound, we would post it as needed. If they went back, then we wouldn't have an additional aid there without a student.
Bill, if it's possible that we, that could happen.
Yeah.
Maybe they're right now, that they go, may go away, you know, a week from now, or not.
Or may go back to halftime.
May go back to halftime, yeah.
The news that we've once been waiting on, ADEF grades are to be released tomorrow by the State Board. I, of course, will not be able to provide the board with a presentation to discuss the grades until after it's been made official by the board tomorrow, and the embargo is released. So, I, I plan to discuss this with you at the November 29 meeting. Sean, if you would like, I have some information, if you'd like, if you've got time, you can use it.
Okay.
Would you walk through it together? I know that there was, a media was invited today, if you, you know anything about that?
Yeah.
It's something that I read in a Gazette, or, that, and I can't remember who it was that was quoted, that there was supposed to be an invitation to go out to the local media to meet with some members of the State Department to discuss the release. I don't know if that happened or not.
Okay.
But it was out there.
I'm sure it's some kind of black ball.
One of many.
When you speak the truth in media, you're the outsider, Sean.
Ray's gonna provide you with a finance update. I'm gonna discuss our grades at the next meeting. Matt Miller will also be here to provide the board with an update with CTD, if there's some things that's happened over there since the last time he addressed the board that he'd like to share. He'll be here. And also, will be providing the board a legal update, that we've had some movement with some grievances, and a couple other situations that I need to share. That's all.
Check back to the A, I know we lost the girl from Hannah. What happens there with the A danger?
Well, actually, there's, there's still a need there at that school. We have two students at that school that we were, it's something that we've been having a conversation, situation, we've been having conversations with the administration at Hamlin, that we believe that, that we need to leave the A at that school, and that's, that's, that's our point.
And we anticipate an A, we've been told an A is gonna retire, they brought the papers in.
Yes.
And if that, that A's not needed at Hamlin, then we may be able to put that A in that situation, in that position where that person would retire for Thanksgiving.
Is that A that might retire at Hamlin present?
No, at the high school.
But you're permitted to move them like that?
Retire in October.
All right. Okay, board members, anything else? Audience, Ray, you wanna say something, you or Bill or Brandon? Kirk? You've been awful quiet back there.
I was told to be quiet.
You've done a good job.
Don, if we ask everybody else anything to say, would you say anything?
Nah, I'm good. Just, these grades, I mean, are they, is there an upside? Is there a, is there a positive way to present these? Do you, okay.
You're creative.
Well, I try to be, but you know, sometimes.
It's not what you got to work on.
Okay.
But I, I'm more than happy to sit down with you tomorrow, if you have time to. It doesn't have to be March, it could be Thursday sometime.
Yeah, fine.
But, yeah.
Cool.
I'll share with you, I don't know if I can explain everything.
Okay.
It's, it's somewhat complicated, to be honest with you.
I'm just hated that the parents and the public's not gonna understand this, and they're all gonna be questioning why, and we haven't been, you know.
Right. All questions I've asked from the beginning, and others as well, you know, how this was gonna unfold, because that's, that's always been a concern of mine, is how did you, how did you present that information out in front of, you know.
It looks like they would have presented it to us first, and let us present it to the public, rather than just put it out in the public and let them say, my God, my school is a left school, or a B school, and I'm gonna get my kid out there.
I say, don't worry too much about it, because they'll change it to something else in about three years.
Well, they haven't released the embargo yet, it's March. They may be embargoed for another month.
And honestly, the email that I had received previously said its release wouldn't occur until at the very earliest end of November, and actually, the way the email was read, it sounded like it may be, you know, could have been even later this year, before we would see the grades officially released, to allow schools and administrators an opportunity to look closely at the, at the information, to make sure it's accurate. Because there was, there was an error made in the growth calculation that impacted sixty-seven schools, the grades changes as a result, including a couple of our schools. So, to the good, I mean, it helped us, so. It was kinda surprising to me to see the email last, kinda late last week, that the grades were gonna be released this week. I was expecting it to happen later, so. So.
Will you explain to Sean, you will explain how the grades have come about, attendance and test scores?
Yes. There's a, they call it metrics, but it's the criteria for determining those grades is spelled out clearly for elementary, middle, and high school. So, that, some of that information may, Sean, may already be on the state website. There's some information that's public that's already out there, and I have hard copies, which I'll share with you. But I, all this information I'll bring to the 29th board meeting to share with you. I wish the timing had been better or different. I would love to have had the conversation with you tonight.
But at this point, you know, obviously, and the principals know?
Principals know.
That is.
What, and the central office administrators?
We'll find out.
It is silly, I.
Okay.
It mightn't be a bad week, the week before Thanksgiving, to release them. I'm just saying, there's no school next week, it might be.
Well, we talked about it.
Fortuitous, maybe.
That's why they're playing with them.
Well, you know, I just think it's like a Friday news drop, you know.
And what, if we really don't want to expect, I mean, what the reaction will be.
So, we just get on the line tomorrow and try to see what our, how our schools do that, I guess, huh?
No, no, I, I can push that out to you, once it's official. Yeah. No, I'll share with, with the board the grades by, by email, but I, we're just not going to have an opportunity to talk about it until the 29th.
If there's nothing further, then let's adjourn until November the 29th, 16:01 meeting here at the county office. Have a motion. November the 29th at 1 o'clock, and Carol's made the motion. Second, Mr. Larry. Oh, yes?
Yes.
All right.